The June 17, 2025 Special Meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. Public comment will be limited to items on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Conrad?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Yurin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Present.
Mayor Riggins?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's see. Which staff member would like to volunteer for the Pledge of Allegiance? Kristin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. May we please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 12, 2025.
May we please have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right. Move on to our next page. Consent calendar. Do we have anything, Perkins?
Yes, we have the fiscal year 2425 third quarter financial report.
Okay. Richard, will you be giving us a presentation on that or just the full budget?
Just the full budget.
Okay. So do we have any public speakers on consent?
No.
Any raised hands?
We don't have any speaker slips and this meeting is being held in person only, so we don't have any Zoom participation available.
Thank you. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll leave my comments on the third quarter into the next year budget.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now we'll go on to our budget. So we'll have a staff report, please. Yes, ma'am.
Before starting, I would just like to commend Renee Nierman and her team for doing just, yes, massive jazz hands for their hard work and dedication throughout this process. So we're very grateful to you and saw the light on many times leaving late at night. So thank you very much. And also thank you, Richard, for presenting today and your hard work on this as well. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, members of the council. I'll be presenting the overview for you this afternoon and I'll jump right into it. The format that we're using today is one that we've utilized in the past few years. So it should look very familiar. We're going to start off with how we developed the budget, which is, you know, very streamlined this year because of the demands that we've had to fulfill our staff to the recovery and rebuilding initiatives. We'll also cover a quick overview of revenues and expenditures. The story there is unique from what it has been in the past and we want to highlight for you some of the reasons why those things are a little bit different. We'll take a look at the fund balance and then followed by the department overviews where each of the department directors will come up and present their budget proposals for the coming fiscal year and then we'll end up with next steps. Again, this slide should look very familiar. It's the same snapshot that we provide to summarize the look at all of our revenues and all of our expenditures and where do we receive funds from and how do we allocate them? As you can see, the general fund represents about close to three quarters of the total revenue that we have to work with for the coming fiscal year. And the second largest amount is special revenue funds, which tend to have a prescribed funding allocation that's available to them. And then looking over at total expenditures.
Richard?
Yes.
Just a real, I didn't know you were jumping into the future budget that quickly. Real quick question. I got the third quarter budget and we've got all this money being allocated and more of it's coming in. Is this consistent with what we've had in prior years? Anything different going on that we should be aware of this year? In terms of, you know, the way the revenue comes in, I understand we get part of, everything's consistent with same percentages we've had in prior years, so nothing we should be taking, really worried about. Is that a fair statement? Cool. I'm done.
Maybe I can follow up on that. So we get our normal allocation from the assessor's office on our property taxes and those are coming in as they have. We wouldn't see anything until the fall maybe for any adjustments that might be from the fire. And then sales tax is the same thing. Are we, when do those normally come in throughout the year? Just a clarifying question.
Sales tax comes in on a regular basis, but we are
Thank you.
It's all coming in on its normal, standard, regular basis. Sales tax, we're anticipating to be a little bit lower because of the fire, PCH being closed, that kind of thing. We presented, I believe, in the mid-year report, the revenue summary that we had the consultant do that addresses that. I can share that with you again if you need that report. But there were some hits in particular to sales tax.
Okay.
Because of that.
Great.
Because of the fires and our response.
And we'll see some of that in the proposed budget.
Absolutely.
Part of the presentation will touch on that, too.
Yes. Revenues were held back a bit until we see things smooth out. We'll know probably a little bit more. I just want to say that this is a snapshot in time. We'll know a little bit more as the year starts to play out and as we see how we recover and how the revenues bounce back from everything that occurred. Thank you.
Long as we're on track.
Appreciate that.
All right. Jumping back into the presentation. The next slide here is a more detailed look at how general fund revenues are utilized for the different expenses that we have to provide the service to the community. As you'll, as I'll point out, property taxes is the, is one of the largest sources of funds that we receive. This is a fairly stable revenue source for us. Of course, as property values go up, as property values exchange hands, properties are reassessed and they generate incrementally higher property tax revenues. Regarding other use taxes, this is a function of the activity, the business activity that occurs within the community associated with transient occupancy taxes. When people stay in short-term rentals or in hotels, they generate TOT. And then when people make purchases at restaurants and in retailers, they generate sales tax. So both are the, two of those combined are the largest source of revenue for the city, the general fund revenue for the city. And then as you can see in the pie chart on the right, this is a distribution of funds, the departments that receive funds to provide services. Largest is management administration, which includes a lot of different functions here in the city. It includes, you know, HR and IT and the city clerk and a lot of our inter-agency services that we provide to the community. Public safety is the next largest. One, one thing that is accounting for a large percentage of our expenditure is disaster response. And you'll see this as a reoccurring theme because of the fires that have been experienced here in Malibu, we're having to allocate a significant amount of funding to the disaster response. And just imagine, you know, what it would look like, what this pie chart would look like if we didn't have that $10 million. You would see much closer alignment with the revenues and the expenditures, but because of disaster response, because we have to operate the rebuild center, because we have to rebuild infrastructure that's been damaged, we have to come up with a revenue source to provide that repair or that service. Here is a look at the history of property tax revenue in the city. And as you can see, there is a trend, positive trend over time, where property tax revenue has grown. And the reasons for that are because of the reasons I've already shared. But as we look forward and that, looking at this slide, it's the color, the bar graphs that are color-coded in green. This is our projection based on special legislation that has already been signed by the governor, which will keep our property tax revenue the same for the next two coming fiscal years. And then after that, we will be reset at roughly $1.1 million of revenue lower than where we are today. That is what the estimation that was provided by the city's contractor, HDL, that was the amount that they forecasted. We are going to be impacted because of the property, the structures that were destroyed. As we, can we rebuild and, you know, the pace of rebuild is still to be determined, we would forecast a return to the trend and then hopefully aligning with that close to the end of the decade. Here is a look at the general fund reserves, how they fluctuated over time. And one thing of note is, is that in the past three years, we have seen a very significant change in the reserve balance. You know, it grew pretty significantly following COVID because of, you know, some wise financial decisions by the, by the city council and some belt tightening that occurred within the departments. But as you can see, it has taken a dive in response to the Franklin and Palisades fires. And that is largely attributed to the significant costs associated with the recovery services, ranging from cleanup, but also including security, permitting assistance. You know, that, that service is really essential, has been essential to the recipients of those services, but they come at a pretty hefty price tag. Where our latest estimate is putting that total at about $12 million, of which has been funded by the general fund over the past couple of years. The other big reason for the drop is the utilization of general fund reserves for CIP projects. And in the past two years, we've spent about $23 million on CIP projects. The use of general fund for CIP is a little bit unique. A lot of cities don't have such robust reserves that they can tap into for infrastructure. And what they tend to do is they tend to finance the improvements so they can smooth out those, those, you know, financial hits over a longer period of time. Yes, they do pay interest, but again, it's all intended to kind of soften the financial hit. Because otherwise, as is the case of the skate park here in Malibu, you know, we're funding that at a tune of over $4 million. That is, that's a pretty significant hit. We know that is a piece of infrastructure that the community wants and is supports. But, you know, because we're following the trend of utilizing the general fund to pay for that infrastructure, we are, we're having to use the general fund for that. Here is a snapshot of personnel and you will see that, you know, there are roughly 130 full-time equivalent personnel across all the departments that are providing specialized services. Of note are some staff changes that you are seeing in the proposed budget summarized here in this table. In general, these are positions that are designed to help with the significant backlog of projects that are, in some cases are strategic, in some cases are essential to recover funds. In some cases, they're really critical to build plans and financial, financial plans to address the significant recovering resilience activities that are still to come. So we'll rely on presentations from each of the directors to, to provide more detail on those. Again, we've also incorporated a cost of living adjustment of 3% consistent with the regional increase that we have observed. And then, of course, we also have to budget for our CalPERS obligations. Here is a look at the recommendations that were provided by the A&amp;F Committee for the nonprofits that have requested grant assistance from the city. As you can see, the A&amp;F Committee did, was able to allocate funds to most of the requesting organizations. However, there are still four on here that we are still waiting, staff is still waiting for a direction on what to do with them. As it's been communicated, you know, in the past, what we did is we worked with, the staff worked with council to determine if, if funding should come from this, the same pot of funding or it should come from the broader general fund reserve. And so we're available for your feedback and consideration on how to, how to best proceed This slide summarizes the department changes in terms of increases or impacts to the budget. And they range from a high of $2.6 million in administrative and management services. The next largest would be community development because of some of the reorganization and service enhancement that Yolanda is, as the new director of community development, is proposing to deliver services more efficiently and effectively. And then, you know, range through some actually reductions in Rob's department. So from here, we're going to transition into the detail for each of the departments and I will get us started with the management and administrative services slides. Here is an overview of the allocations that will be needed to fund the recommendations from staff. And there really are a significant number of accomplishments across the organization. I think this is one of the hardest slides for the executive team to, to come, you know, whittle their, their top four or five projects down to. But what I keep hearing again over and over is the, you know, really significant, highly coordinated, highly dedicated response of not just the administration department, but also from all departments. But in order for that to happen, there's, needs to be a lot of coordination that occurs within the city manager's office and it sounds like a lot of that was happening. And, you know, we are all the beneficiaries of their hard work that they put in. Another huge accomplishment is the rebuild center itself. It's continually recognized as, as setting the standard for those communities that are impacted. I've heard from several colleagues that work in Los Angeles County and the city of LA that the Malibu rebuild center has definitely set the standard that others are trying to follow and emulate. The finance group has also been recognized for, as, I forget the, the number of years that they've been recognized consistently, consecutively, for their financial reporting. So that's always something that we want to be proud of because we can't do anything if we don't have the books straight and, you know, budgets allocated to, to the services that, you know, allow us to respond. And then we've also successfully implemented, implemented the first year of our cybersecurity plan, which is of course designed to protect operations from hacks, which seem to be unfortunately becoming more, more common. And so the better we can stay on top of that, the, the more we can limit the financial liability associated with cybersecurity. For the coming year, administration has really focused on three main goals. They are recovery and resilience, modernization, and workplace culture. And what we're talking about is, you know, as, as Candace and I have worked with the staff, we've really learned that there is a, a really dire need to come up with an economic recovery plan. The businesses that have weathered the storm, first time, you know, more recently it was COVID, then more, after that it was the fires. The business community has been pretty heavily impacted and they would benefit from strategic outreach and prioritization and funding of different needs that could help them and help us restore the three, three, almost $4 million that we have lost in, in terms of revenue to the city. So the sooner we can help them, the sooner we can help ourselves restore that lost revenue. We also need an infrastructure resilience plan. We don't, as we've learned, you know, there are potential delays associated with unfunded plans to rehab streets and water lines and coastal infrastructure, which we've only really scratched the surface on. But the first step is to develop, you know, do the analysis, do the, you know, scan of best practices and then go after the funding to secure the improvements that we know will help with long-term resilience of the community. Based on preliminary estimates, we've estimated the cost of the needed upgrades at almost $400 million, $362 million, well beyond the city's capacity to fund independently. So it'll be really important to utilize, you know, different funding mechanisms, partnerships, public-private partnerships to, to address those needs. In terms of modernization, we, we have a real need to, to take a, you know, kind of a scalpel to some of the, you know, scars that we have, some of the, the kinks in the system, the red tape. We're learning that we're really hindered right now to do things faster and more efficiently because of the, the number of outdated policies that we ask staff to, to work on and implement. So in order to accelerate, we really have to put some effort into modernizing. And modernizing not just the policies, but also the, the digital ecosystem. Because a lot of our work right now is manual, it's paper-based, and it could easily be digital with a focused group of staff and consultants that could help us figure out finally how to do things like digital time cards, electronic bill payment, as well as kind of the day-to-day tools associated with project management. So we're really excited about the potential here. And then as, as we've heard more recently, there's, we, you know, as always, you know, across the board in local government, there is a, there is an increasing focus on enhancing workplace culture. We've had a lot of folks that have retired since COVID. We had a lot of, you know, new energetic folks that are joining our teams and we need to figure out, how do we keep them motivated? How do we keep them focused? How do we grow and help them fulfill their potential? And so we see employee recognition initiatives and as well as focused training and leadership development programs, it's really essential to help the staff within the organization fulfill that potential and feel connected and feel like, you know, this is a place where they want to be long-term. Here is a summary of the added positions. They include a deputy city manager and assistant city manager. We saw these as essential to help the department directors address the, the significant number of needs that are ongoing and, and needs that are emerging as they relate to the priorities that I just touched upon, including economic recovery, infrastructure resilience, and policy updates. Could we do things without them? We could. It would likely take longer though, because, you know, we wouldn't have the same amount of hours, the amount of energy, the amount of expertise allocated to address these complex problems. But we, we really think that if we gave these staff and consultant teams about three years, they could really help us modernize and, and do things better in about, you know, two to three-year timeframe. And then, of course, we could reevaluate what to do after that. So not to be fearful of the, of the investment because, you know, we think it could definitely produce tangible benefits very quickly. So from here, we'll transition to Kelsey.
Yes, I'll be presenting the city clerk budget. Richard, if you could help me with the slides. Thank you. So the total budget for the department is $856,000. The majority of that is salaries and benefits. It reflects the addition of the full-time administrative assistant that the city council approved at our mid-year budget in May as well. And then on the next slide, accomplishments for the year. I'm going to try to keep it brief, but to remind us all of what we've been through over the last year. We did conduct the November 5, 2024, general municipal election. We had five candidates appearing on the ballot in addition to one writing candidate. And we were able to complete that process and swear in the elected council members just a few hours before the Franklin fire broke out, which pivoted all of our focus to emergency response at that time. My staff did do a lot of work in the emergency. We prepared emergency declarations for Franklin and Palisades fire. And then I'm very proud of my staff of three staffing the EOC every day of those long activations. Every day shift, we had coverage to assist with that. And then as we've returned to more of our normal operations, we do still have an element of disaster recovery, primarily in public records requests and city council meetings. We have 1,284 public records requests this fiscal year as of yesterday, more today. Of that, 490 have been fire rebuild requests. So that's a big piece of it. That's probably temporary, but even when we remove those rebuild requests, we do still see a significant increase in public records requests year after year. Every year it's been about a 20% increase. And then as of today, this is the 48th city council meeting of the fiscal year. So again, it goes up, but we've been keeping up. And then our goals and objectives for this upcoming fiscal year, a lot of it is legally mandated and day-to-day operations. We will still have public records requests, working not just on responding to them, but on improving some of our documentation and processes so we can try to streamline that even more. Since I don't think the volume or the complexity is going to decrease anytime soon, we're going to work on filling that new vacancy for the administrative assistant so that we can free up the deputy city clerks for some more high-level projects and more support for council meetings as well. We are monitoring upcoming legislation. There are changes to the Brown Act and the Public Records Act every year, especially the Brown Act. They continue to find new ways to try and use technology in the meetings. So we're looking forward to see what those changes will be. And then also we're trying to work more on records management, assisting all the departments with that project as well, including digitizing different departments and divisions as we're able. We assisted with digitizing HR this year and there are some more looking to move into the 21st century this fiscal year. And then on the next slide, so in summary, we're going to continue supporting our piece of disaster recovery that we can with the residents, mostly through public records requests, which has started to stabilize to a more manageable workload for all the departments. And then although we have a reduction in the election budget this year, since we won't be holding the general municipal election, in the second half of the fiscal year, we do start preparing for the nomination period in July. And then the volume of day-to-day work does continue to increase, but we're here to serve. And that's it for this budget. If you have any questions?
Anyone have any clarifying questions at this time? Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm here to present for the public safety department. The total budget for the department is $16.8 million, which 16.7 million of which is from the general fund and special revenue is just $175,000. We have 5.5 full-time employees. So some key accomplishments for the public safety department in the last year is the completion of the KBO booster antenna, which I'm sure you're familiar with, which will really enhance our ability to get communication out after an emergency particularly. We've also completed the first phase of the PCH speed safety system, which is the development of the impact report and use policy, which were required. We've completed the installation of the automatic license plate reader cameras. They are now in place throughout Malibu and we're now monitoring the effectiveness of that and we'll report in the future on that. The homeless count was down another 30%, which just continues to amaze me how we keep making progress on that. So we're continuing that effort. And our fire safety liaisons completed more than 60 wildfire assessments. Some goals and objectives for the coming year is to continue to increase wildfire resiliency, expand alert and warning capabilities, update the safety element of the general plan, update training and response procedures. And that's directly in connection with the after-action review process we're going through right now. We're taking a hard look at how everything went. We will incorporate everything learned into updating our training and response procedures. And we will be hosting another safety and preparedness fair. In summary, the public safety department includes in-house and contract public safety programs with a budget of $16.8 million. And we strive to increase community safety and resiliency and increase staff response capabilities. That's it.
Thank you. To you.
Are we going to ask questions now or are we going to circle back in to a moment with that?
I think right now if we do clarifying questions and then we'll do public comment and then we can get, does that work for everyone?
Let's see. Good afternoon, Mayor Riggins and honorable members of council. I will be presenting the community services department budget today. As you know, the community services department is liaison to three different commissions, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Malibu Arts Commission, and the Harry Barofsky Memorial Youth Commission. The overview today, our total budget is $6.4 million, which includes the operation of various recreation programming, special events, park maintenance, improvement projects, and staffing. The costs associated with coordinating these, all of these, as I mentioned, 6.4, of which 4.7 are out of the general fund. The special revenue budget of $571,000, that's related to our dialeride program that serves our senior center and people with disabilities. Our FTE is 23.58. We have 11 full-time employees who work in our department and the rest of those part-time staff work seven days a week. staff work seven days a week at some of our facilities, at the Malibu Bluffs Park, Michael Landon Center and Pool, as well as providing oversight to various recreation programs, such as after-school programming, our senior center, special events, and so forth. The requests are approximately $157,000. Most of that is related to the skate park. So we have included landscaping and maintenance, as well as custodial services for that permanent park. In addition, we have asked, we need to fund shuttle services for our senior excursions and for our special events, such as Chumash Day. We do provide a shuttle from the Ioki property to Malibu Bluffs Park. Despite the fires and us halting programs for a little bit, we did offer over 350 recreation programs. We processed over 150 facility rental requests. Thanks to the assistance of the Public Works Department, our permanent skate park construction is well underway, and we're looking forward to opening that park before the end of the year, calendar year. We're continuing to work with the Malibu Arts Commission to provide exhibitions in our gallery. This last year, we provided six exhibitions, which was right on target. In our poet laureate program, Nathan Hassel will end his term in September. We successfully have recruited our next poet laureate, which will be presented to the council in the next couple of months. So we're excited to continue that program, and it's benefited students as well as adults. We published our eighth annual community art and student anthology, and that group continues to thrive. Some goals and objectives, of course, we have our permanent skate park grand opening, and we will work with commissions and the community to figure out what that looks like and bringing a very exciting event forward for our community to celebrate that milestone. Tonight, as a matter of fact, we are bringing a conceptual design to the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding our snack shack. We have worked with a designer and as well as the youth sports leagues to come up with this design, which we'll present tonight. And we hope to bring that forward to the council before the end of the year as well. Lost Flores Creek Park did sustain some damage caused by the Palisades fire. In reviewing some of the repairs, there are some modifications that have been requested by the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as staff, just some alterations to help us better access the facility to provide maintenance. The dog park did come up again, so we will talk to the commission about that this next fiscal year, about those possibilities to providing some modifications to that park. The council in November directed the Arts Commission to review options for the Performing Arts Center, so we are in that process right now. We will have a community meeting next month. We'll provide some information about that, just marketing to get people to attend, but we hope to bring something forward to the council before the end of the year as well. And just park and median repairs, those are related to fire damages as well, so we need to repair some landscape, some shrubs, some irrigation, some fencing, so we'll continue to work at, work on those items through this year. In summary, we are focusing on our capital improvement projects, which I stated earlier. Another exciting capital improvement project we hope to get to is the Charmley Nature Center. We'll start working on those renovations as well. We are always continuing to review options to expand recreation art opportunities. Just yesterday, we onboarded two new recreation coordinators, so another part of our team that can work on talking to the public, figuring out what they want, offering new opportunities for them. One of our focuses in our department is native landscaping and environmental education. We do that through all of our parks. One focus is, of course, Legacy Park, and making sure that we bring the community out to see that landscape and habitat that we've created there, and partnering with the library to provide some educational programming. And of course, I think a theme so far has been streamlining processes, just finding ways to help internal staff as well as our public. We will be introducing a new recreation software system that will launch this fall, and it's a very beautiful mobile application to help people register for programs, pay for programs, see facility availability, and we are excited to launch that again. So that concludes Community Services Department. Happy to answer any questions.
I just have one. You mentioned "by the end of the year" a couple times. Could you just clarify, is that calendar year, fiscal year, budget year, and?
So some of the things I mentioned, snack shack, performing arts center, we hope to get something to this council by the end of the calendar year.
Good afternoon, honorable city council, city manager. I want to start by, thank you for the opportunity. This is our first year that we propose the budget for the Community Development Department. Want to really take a pause and thank Renee and Joni. Without them, we would not be here today. Also Patricia Salazar and Isabel and Farah, everybody has been contributing so this budget can be presented to you today, so thank you. On June 10 of this year, sorry, the Community Development Department was created. This Community Development Department is unifying two sections, two departments, unifying the planning and environmental sustainability department. The functions that this department is overseeing, planning, building and safety, code enforcement, wastewater management, clean water, solid waste, environmental programs, and administration. The goal and the objectives of having this, the team working together is to centralize the resources for permitting, development, and environmental compliance, increasing efficiency, improvements, service delivery, and also creating a more streamlined development process, specifically now that we're going through the rebuild process. Yes. Our vision has been also to, and the team is unify with purpose, dedicated to service, and do it committed to excellence. How we're going to be accomplish this, this is our budget, and we are proposing a total budget of $17 million, with the general fund of 16.3, a special revenue of 672. At the end of all of this, the department will be your largest department within the city operations. We are requesting a 1.12 million, that with three positions of a deputy community development director, code enforcement officer, and associate planner. To give you a better idea of the function of this department, we have created an organizational charge that we will propose to have a community development director with a building official overseeing the code enforcement, inspections, environmental health, plan check reviews, and public counter on the building portion and safety portion. We will also have the Assistant Community Development Director concentrated on more of the planning portion of the division's operations with current planning, and also long-range planning, and in addition with the public counters for planning. Our department does have a planning commission, an environmental review board, and also usually brings appeals to the city council, so the creation of the Assistant Community Development Director follows the recommendations of the Baker Telly. One thing that has been added and is requested to city council is the addition of the Deputy Community Development Department Director that oversee the environmental programs and the operations and management. With a budget of $17 million, it needs a more focused leadership and oversight on that area. The deputy will provide a day-to-day leadership and oversight for those essential services. It will also have the opportunity for operational support through the already existing managers, and also help with community and regulatory engagement. The introduction of these three new key positions is also a mid-management level position that will support the evolving responsibilities that will provide more focused leadership and oversight over those three functions. The goals and objectives primarily will be the fire rebuilds with a focus in Palisades, Franklin, Broad, and Wosley Fire rebuilds, managing the fire rebuild center, continue working with about fee waivers, the planning guidelines that we're presenting in front of you, the meetings with the rebuild ambassador, continue the engagement and the communications with the community, with community meetings. We'll also be exploring technology upgrades. I believe the conversation already has started with Archie Starr in a way that can be used as a tool to streamline and help facilitate those preliminary reviews for those families that are going through the rebuild process. But also, the update on policies is also another item that we cannot forget. We have an ADU ordinance amendments that need to align with the state law that we will be bringing to you, a building code adoption that will happen this year during the fall, we will bring that to you, and the housing element implementation policies. And also adding the safety element, the public and safety is bringing to you, but eventually will fall under the community development staff. Another two items that are not mentioned on this slide is the cost of vulnerability assessment that will come back to you in this fall, closing the, closing the information and bringing it to council. We'll also have the dark sky compliance that we need to continue bringing to you regarding the commercial and institutional facilities, and also being a support for any PCH safety with public works to make sure that all of those projects move forward. Accomplishments, extremely proud of all the work that the staff has been doing from emergency operations, repopulation, and recovery. There has been a monumental work done by all staff, providing information and be ready for, to assess to all of our families. We have created, we created a community meetings. The rebuilds, the re-removal, what a story. In less than four months, five months, most of the properties are, parcels are now clean. The other big accomplishment that is, well, to just pause and thank Tyler and the City Attorney's Office for the dedication, the many hours and the hard work that was done on the rebuild ordinance for the LCP certification and the many hours that he put in there. So just want to thank Tyler on this efforts. Also, the housing element certification, that was a great accomplishment that the city got the certification at the end of 2024. There's also development portal upgrades and the implementation more to the one-on-one operations of the Blue Beam software system, a system that helps with plan check review. One other item that I also want to acknowledge is the many awards that we have received this year, that the city and the city departments have been acknowledged not only at the state level, but the national level. We have the California Resource Recovery Association for Outstanding Construction and Demolition Award that the city, the city just was awarded. We have the American Planning Association, the LA Section on Resiliency and Sustainability Award of Excellence. We have the California Water Environmental Association Community Engagement and Outreach for Project of the Year, and then the International Code Council acknowledgement of the Code Official of the Year. So in summary, we will adhere to council goals and then follow the strategic work plan, and we will continue working diligently. Personally, I feel that in the, the department feels that fire rebuilds, how many number of permits we're going to have an approval, that will be our concentration and is very much at the top of our conversation as strategies to keep on moving forward. Ensuring consistency and delivery of services is also our goal, aligning with the broader goals of our organization, and continue to strengthen the team to better serve the community with excellence. With that, my, that is my presentation. I'm open to any questions.
Any questions?
So good afternoon, council. I guess they save the best for last? Anyway, let me just kind of go over our.
Is that a dad joke?
What's that?
Is that a dad joke?
Has to be, right? It has to be for me. Just overall budget, it's a little over $9 million this year coming up. Half of that, a little over half of that is from the general fund. Some of the funds that we receive for revenue include the, from the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility, those, those funds goes towards the operation and maintenance of that facility. We also receive a special revenue of 1.1 million. We also have special revenues coming from Landside Assessment Districts, which total of about $560,000. We have a total of 12 and a half amazing public work staff. I want to really kind of toot their horn and say they did an amazing job this year, kind of responding to the disasters, responding to floods, doing all these reviews, getting our projects out. We had a very ambitious and really aggressive CIP plan this last year, and they did an amazing job on getting to majority of the milestones we did last year. So I really want to thank them for all the hard work they did. This upcoming year, we're going to request 175,000, and that's for one additional staff member. We're looking to add a management analyst to help with the financing part of what we're doing and some other tasks to, to free up some of our staff to do some other amazing Some of the accomplishments that we've done this last year, we completed six capital projects, four emergency disaster projects, those are mostly from the Wosley Fire. We conducted 825 development reviews. We issued 250 encroachment permits, and that, and what that means is those, those permits allow property owners or, or other people to use the city's right-of-way for other purposes than, than just, just, just being out there. So those permits allow property owners to kind of do things in the public right-of-way. We treated over 24 million gallons of wastewater, but most importantly, and one of the things I'm really proud of our staff is how they respond to the fires and the storms. They did an amazing job on kind of reacting and kind of doing what's needed to be done, going out there, cleaning up the roadways and really making the roadway safe, especially after those storms. They did a really good job, and I can't thank them enough for all the work they do. And yeah, that was, that was pretty amazing. Some of the accomplishments, we've also done this last year, is we bought a new computer program that actually takes inventories of all of our roadways. It's a camera that goes on. It's a camera that goes on, goes on a car, we drive the road. It, it takes pictures of all the roadways and inventories, everything, but it also creates a pavement condition. It tells us how, if there's any issues or it actually gives a, gives a number value of that condition of that roadway. And that helps us developing strategies on how we can resurface our roadway and make sure that infrastructure is being maintained properly. That program also automatically inventories all of our signage. And so it goes through, it takes pictures, it automatically updates all of our signage and we have an update and condition of all of our signs. It gives us another mechanism to, to, to actually have a proper maintenance program for those signs. And lastly, one of the most important things is that we completed a bunch of documentation for disaster cost reimbursement. We completed three of those cost reimbursement from FEMA and we're, and that's along the way and we're hoping to get reimbursed with that within the next coming, coming months or several months. We'll see how it goes.
And are those for any particular disaster or does it cover throughout the various ones we've had?
It's not the current ones we have. It's, it's, it's probably Franklin and beyond or past.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Some of our goals and objectives this, this upcoming year is once again always improve safety on PCH. We have a number of capital projects going to be aligned to, to actually doing that. We have some amazing opportunities and things in our, in our plan moving forward and currently that we're going to be implementing. I'm excited to kind of share those. Another one is developing a preliminary design report for the wastewater collection system on PCH. And then the next one is moving forward with our Civic Center Water Treatment Facility Phase Two project. We're currently in, in discussion with the regional board now and developing strategies and how we can move forward with phase two. And I'm hopeful within the next couple of months, we'll bring to council an update on kind of where we are with that. One of the things that we've been working on and trying to get done is a asset management program. An asset management program identifies all assets within the city and developing a plan to maintain those assets and come up with a very efficient way to track those, come up with replacement timeframes. And so we have a good plan moving forward and that kind of ties into our infrastructure strategy on how we can move forward. What is those, those life cycles for some of those assets and how we can implement that in the future and future projects? So the first thing is actually developing a needs assessment and looking what our actual needs are and developing that strategy before we start implementing an asset management program. And lastly, I think as a broken record is continuing documentation for disaster reimbursement. We're currently doing that now and, and once we get all the information and gathering that stuff, we'll be able to submit that. But that's a lengthy process and our staff is looking forward to kind of completing that and getting that going. So in summary, this upcoming year, we have 23 CIP and emergency disaster projects. There's that famous word again, disaster documentation for disaster recovery. We're going to maintain our street maintenance level of service and continue that effort throughout. And one of the, one of the main things that I really strive on is the continuing kind of partnership and collaboration with our partner agencies. I think that's a valuable tool and resource that, that we take really serious and we want to foster those relationships to kind of build that teamwork between the different This next slide is showing the 18 projects that we're, capital projects that we're going to be working on this next coming year. That total is about 18 and a half million. A couple, a couple of projects that I want to identify, our PCH signal sync project is still on there. Unfortunately, we had a little bit delays with some of the events that happened and, but we're, we're on track still now. We're going to be working on getting that project up and going and move on to the next phase, which is the programming, all those signals. Civic Center Water Treatment Facility Phase Two is another major project that we'll be working on next year. Of course, the skate park, the skate park is something that we're in construction and will be working towards. But one of the things that, that's going to be coming up pretty quickly that we're excited to kind of working on is PCH quick build roundabouts projects. That's, we're working really hard with Caltrans or, and developing a plan to kind of put those in over by El Matador State Beach and Encinal. We're hoping to get, get that during the, get that started during the fall and I'll be happy to kind of provide more updates when we have more further kind of clarification from Caltrans. Lastly, here's our five emergency disaster projects, a total of over $8 million. One of the projects here that I really want to identify is the picture here of a pipeline that we installed on Big Rock. There, there was over 6,000 meter feet of pipeline that was damaged. Very, very, very difficult pipeline installation up a slope and our emergency contractors have done an absolute amazing job on putting that together. And this is a picture of the tough terrain that they put in there. And so they're continuing to kind of work on that effort and it's, it's a really complicated and it's really, really good project that is moving right along really well. And that's all my updates. Any questions or clarifications?
Anybody have any questions?
I've asked this before, the quick build PCH roundabouts, those are being paid for through other funds?
Yeah, that's, it's actually Metro Measure M funds. The county supervisor's office had additional funds through their account. They were looking for a significant traffic safety project we can implement really quick on PCH. Identified this project and they were quickly able to transfer those funds to our account so we can get that project going. So yeah, it's all metro transportation funds.
Great. Not the city of Malibu's?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. There was some street repairs over on Sea Lion because of some tree roots and crews over there are doing a fantastic job and finally have a flat, nice street. So I would expect other streets are going to also be similar. Any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't have any speaker slips for this item.
Okay. So back, we'll close public comment and back up to, who wants to go first?
I'll take a run at it. First, thank you all for the presentations. I thought they were excellent. You have done amazing stuff for the last year and we appreciate all of that. I sort of sat back and looked at this from looking down like a 5,000 foot view. And my takeaway was I looked at the undesignated reserve. It was 74 million in 2024, 50 some million last year, and it's down to 51 this year. And we got to 51 because we took six and a half million bucks we had squirreled away in the prior years and added that to it. If we took that six and a half million, if we didn't have the six and a half million, we would end up at 45 million, which barely got us to the 65% baseline we had to have. And I looked on the budget someplace, there's some FEMA reimbursements. There's like three million bucks of FEMA reimbursements included in revenue and, you know, and I mean, look, I'm not smart enough, my crystal ball's not that good, but I keep looking at what's going on in Washington. They're, they're talking about taking down the FEMA department, right? Just dissolving it. So, and I look over the horizon and say these disasters that we have are not going away. Right? I mean, it's going to get hotter again this summer. There was a big article someplace today or yesterday I read talking about, you know, the risk of fire season coming up. And so I'm just wondering, I mean, what, from the perspective of the city, I mean, I'd be a little more conservative looking at some of this stuff, right? I mean, we, you know, as, as much as I like to think that we're like the, you know, the candy store for everybody who wants to come in and get something from us, I think we have to be prepared as we go forward to make sure that we've got the resources in place to take care of the community, you know, the disaster recovery programs that Rob had a run. Those are not going to go away if we have another fire or an earthquake. So I mean, what is, what do you think, what is your perspective and how we should be looking at the budget and/or future decisions of how we manage our money?
Yeah, Candace, you know, feel free to try them, but I, I'll, I'll take a first run at it. I think that's an excellent question and one that we've been thinking about as we prepared this budget. Just noticing some trends as we look across the expenditures over time, as we dig into some of the budgets of the recent past, although we did go back to the 2015, 2016 budget to see what, what did things look like back then? We've seen a continual, you know, desire to kind of want to do things independently. We haven't seen the need to, to reach out and consider public-private partnerships, whether it's, you know, naming rights for facilities or robust, large, big ticket item infrastructure upgrades. So the good news is there's significant potential to do some of that. If we can find, you know, a trusted investment bank, they can help us figure out how to manage these expenses over a long time horizon. And, but we have to, we have to prepare the analysis, we have to prepare the plans to know what we're budgeting for. And so one thing that is also very, has a lot of potential right now is there's a significant appetite from Sacramento and from our local legislators to provide us assistance. And so we just got a great news, I think it was this morning, might've been yesterday, that some of our advocacy work with our local assemblywoman has, has proved to generate some positive feedback so far. Essentially, we want to put ourselves at the head of the line to request early disbursements from some of the statewide initiatives. And, and we have that potential, but we have to insert ourselves because no one will voluntarily do that for us. So we have to get much more active with our, our advocates in Sacramento and DC. And it's all possible. It's, you know, these are the kinds of things I'm having, having, I'm used to having to do and having worked in other organizations, not having such robust reserves to tap into for one-time needs. And you, you kind of have to be willing to go after any pot of funds whenever it's available. And it comes down to the strength of your partnerships, the strength of your ask, the strength of your communications to put together that one-page brief that tells a compelling story that can be more competitive than potentially your neighbor or at least a peer city in the region, because that's, that's the way these decisions are being made. Candace, I don't know if you want to add anything more?
One of the things that we've been talking about extensively is public-private partnerships. When you look at Altadena and the Palisades, Steadfast LA is a nonprofit group, but it has galvanized those communities and they've been able to raise enormous amounts of funds that, you know, can help supplement the budget, the city budget is just, you know, we know it's, you know, totally decimated. And that has not happened here in Malibu where we have not galvanized the public and created, you know, a, a entity where we can raise funds from the community that can help fund a number of community programs. I've, I've worked with Laco. We set up a 501(c)(3) alongside of Laco to help fund Title I schools to bridge the funding gap. At MLK Community Development Corporation, we funded that to help basically bridge the gap in funding from LA County for the creation of a massive 42-acre medical campus. And so to stand up something, there's so many people in the community who are asking, what can I do? How can I contribute? What can I give? There's, you know, the skate park is a great example of where we could really help galvanize the community and help, you know, offset some of the costs of that. So it's not always hitting our, our general fund. I mean, you know, and moving forward, those kind of community projects are really important. You know, even when it comes to the Malibu Education Fund, that's, that's something, you know, I'm looking at, we'll hit the budget hard, but it's, if we have the right entity and the community is galvanized, they can help provide help as well. So I've seen this model work, you know, all over town, except, except here in Malibu. It, it should, and it can work. FEMA, like you, I'm concerned. I see what's happening in DC, but there are, and we have actually met with firms who, that's all they do is, is get FEMA recovery funds as well as infrastructure funds from, from the government. They sit in Alexandria, Virginia. They sit in front of FEMA. So those types of outside consultants and help, I think are going to be necessary with the government as well as, as you said, advocacy. Lobbying is absolutely key, but lobbying has to also be aligned with communications. So you have to have the two have to go hand in hand. So we've been working with our communications team and then also our communications consultants, but also we've been speaking with our lobbying firms and just really CalSTRAT and, and also looking at who's our, who the federal lobbyist is. And it has to all be coordinated, but you also have to inform people what your needs are and you have to explain to them, because we have been so independent. You know, we, we don't like to talk about the fact that we need, you know, assistance, but you know, we are, this, this amount of, of fires and disasters, I know as a long-term resident, I've never seen it like this before. And, and you know, this is where you reach out and, and you say, we do need some help, but it has to be coordinated and that's something that we've been actively working on and actively meeting about. And then also we've been talking to infrastructure fund groups who actually are really excited about working with Malibu. For all of these, you know, capital improvement projects, you know, now's the perfect time to be able to talk to some of these infrastructure groups to be able to go in. And the hit is spread out long, over a long period of time. So you're not seeing these huge hits to your general fund. What is, you know, the point in having like such a great bond rating is you got to use it. Why, why don't you use it? I mean, it's, you know, is that the measure of your success is how big, you know, that, that bond rating? No, that, you know, and nobody wants to have a bunch of debt, you know, but you can refinance debt. There's all kinds of things that you could do, particularly the state that we are in in this particular economy. I mean, we have to think about also the cost of building is going to go up, the cost of labor is going to go up, you know, all these tariffs, all these things. It's going to be a real challenge. And so, you know, you look at it on a macro level, you know, we, we really should be looking at what partnerships can we have on the financial side? What partnerships can we have on advocacy, advocacy? But even within the organization itself, we have to fill these vacancies. There is, there is just too much work being done by too few and people are, are burnt out. And I mean, in the short time that I've been there, I've seen it. And, you know, you, you have to have a, you know, you have to fill these vacancies and that's something we've been really actively working on with human resources. They've been great and we know that there's searches going, but we're, we're trying to speed the pace of these so that you can have smooth operations because the tsunami is coming in terms of rebuilding and the organization is, is, needs to be ready for that. So those are, those are my comments. Just right now, I have plenty more, but those are ones that I think are critical to consider at this moment in time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't argue. I mean, you know, I'd be out reaching for money early and often, as much as we can get. I'm just wondering, you know, sort of the path you just laid out, you know, the partnerships, the lobbying, the federal government lobbying, do we have the resources? Because I don't see any money allocated in the budget to say, you, we, you know, to me, that's the, that is sort of the engine that's going to keep us going. that's the, that is sort of the engine that's going to keep us going.
Yes, we actually, it's, we're, we're paying for them now. It's, it's a matter of ensuring that they are aligned with what we need, so.
So you're thinking of the resources in place right now to be able to do some of the things you just talked about?
Based on this budget. Yes, we do.
Okay. No, I, I, I agree. Everything you said is, is going to be the path moving forward. If we don't find a way to get the relationships built up so we can get some of those funds, if we don't sort of, you know, we've got a good bond rating now, but you, you take away the six and a half million from our unreserved and it goes down to 45 million, that puts you like 69%, as real close to the 65% that gets us our bond rating. So, you know, there's some things we got to keep our eyes on, so. So, okay, I appreciate what you said. Thank you.
Doug?
Okay. Echo what's just been said. And, you know, one of the things about my background in the business sector all these years and banker, I look at this balance, I look at the financials and I keep trying to put them back into a balance sheet P and L statement. Candace and I had this discussion, you know, both of us came out of MBA programs and you sit there and you look at this and go, there's got to be a way to have a P and L out of, out of this in a balance sheet. So let me talk a little bit about it as I sort of dissect it, but keep talking about it in the format we have here. As Steve mentioned, our six and a half million dollars disappeared. As I read the budget, it's because it funded the FEMA amount that's due. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We had to find a, a funding source to cover the expenses that we were incurring.
By the way, when you compare us to the city of Los Angeles, who's having to go to the state with its tin cup, trying to get money in order to fund the expenses for FEMA, we're in a much better position. That's the beauty of our balance sheet, so to speak. We've got the cash in order to have a huge receivable. Now, putting back on my banker's hat, I will tell you that in SBA lending, the worst thing to do is to have SBA owe you money, because it's going to take you forever to get it and you're going to, you're going to use up all the copy paper you have filling out all the forms. And that's exactly where we are with FEMA, I think even from the Woolsey fire. I cannot endorse more of what the city interim city manager said and what you guys are looking at. Let's get somebody in here on a consulting basis, even if we have to pay them a fraction of the action to get our money in from FEMA, whether it's advising us on how to fill out the forms or making sure they're in the right hands. FEMA, I just saw on Bloomberg before I came over here that they're talking about setting up the structure for eliminating FEMA. That probably doesn't mean that they're going to stop reimbursing the expenses they already have, but it's going to be hard to find somebody to handle paperwork to. So the sooner we get this started, the better off we're going to be. And I would encourage us to get that going right away. We need to get that six and a half million dollars back in the, the piggy bank because we don't know what's coming in the next fiscal year and we may need that money as well. And I agree with Steve. You, you start getting closer and closer, I think it's, it's very conservative to say you need 65% for a AA+ bond rating, but on the other hand, it's nice to have a AA+ bond rating. I know from my prior experience about that, it's a lot easier to do deals when you've got a AA+. Let's talk, and, and I want to say one thing, we don't have an expense issue in this town. Yeah, if you don't have the money, you have an expense issue. But our issue is we don't have the revenue. We're not building our revenue up as fast. So it's a, it's a revenue issue, not expense issue. It's a balance sheet issue because we've got loans out to people that need to pay us back and we're basically funding FEMA at a no-interest loan. So FEMA, come on down. And I know, like the Ladago Canyon rework, we've been screwing around with that for, what now, seven or eight years, trying to get them to, to pay for that. So we need to get this, this stuff cleaned up and done because we are, we need to reload to get ready for round, round three, four, five, or whatever's coming up. So kind of going down my list real quick, I think we said that AB 100, which is the budget bill for the state, we've got confirmation, they're going to give us the backfill on the property tax. That's correct. Okay. Take that off my list. We talked about FEMA. In the city manager's office, I thought we already had a deputy city manager. And why are we adding one? Are we having two? As much as I like having you in the position, are we, you're going to get a twin or is it just you?
Yeah, the way we looked at it was, we've had an organization that has had a CM, an assistant city manager, or a deputy city manager. And they've struggled to take on some of the initiatives that we're proposing. They've, they've talked about modernization, but they've really struggled to make much progress. They've never really talked about long-term strategy. We want to make that a, a big point of emphasis and focus. And so, because these are such high-level, complex issues, because they will likely require significant background in either finance or policy, we thought it, the, the individuals best suited, the personnel level best suited would be at the, at a, quite a high level, a deputy city manager level. And so, that's, that's why we included it in the budget. It, it would in fact be an additional deputy city manager. And so, we know that's an aggressive ask, so we were, you know, we're prepared to address it.
I would add that economic recovery and resiliency and working with the businesses in town and all of that is really necessary. And, but while you have things going on day-to-day and, and have the work, I can tell you, I'm pretty much chained to the desk. It's just constant, constant, constant admin, you know, answering emails, fielding, you know, all kinds of questions that, you know, all of us are just work, work, working and that we're not planning. You're not forecasting. You're not, you know, we've now seen enough disasters that we need to plan for this stuff. We need to have a, a resiliency plan. And, and you can't do that with just what we have right now, you know, unless we stay up until, you know, 1, 2 AM every night and like just typing away, but that's just, you know, we need that capacity.
Well, I'm, I'm right there with you on it. And one of the things I've got on my list, when I come back to, we don't have an expense issue, we have an income issue. When you look at the delta between what happened on the transfer tax, the transit occupancy tax, both hotel and short-term, the state isn't backfilling that. And in fact, our property tax, which everybody initially thought was going to be the big dividend, turns out to be a minor issue to, to a non-issue. It's our property tax, and probably our secondary taxes, so that I'll call them, where we've got over a $5 million shortfall this fiscal year and hopefully we can fix it. So to Candace's point, I fully agree. And I want to, and I think I understand where you want to put this deputy city manager, but I want to make sure everybody understood, there's two deputy city managers, not just one. Okay. That takes care of that item. Economic development plan, absolutely essential. You know, we have two communities in this city. We have our residents and we have our business operations. And we don't want to turn this town into Disneyland. That's not the point here. But we do need to have sustainable businesses that we promote for local, local businesses and also to support the revenue we need to support the city. So that'll be a key part. On public safety, do we, I did not see the speed cameras going in and one of the things, it was very clear, I think we're spending four and a half million dollars on the skate park out of the general fund. I think we've got $2 million supposed to be coming out of the general fund for speed cameras. And here comes Rob. Where's the money?
So, a couple of things that we identified, we have some Mezzuram transportation funds that we have currently right now. We have a couple, we have several projects we have in there. We're going to be finishing up where we're going to have some balance that could be going towards, towards that, that project. One of the things we're looking at is the capital cost to actually put the poles up. That's the capital cost we need right away. The second part of it is the actual physical cameras. We're developing kind of different strategies on the, the cameras and what options, do we buy the cameras or do we lease them? And from the research that I've developed and found out and talked to other agencies and, and people that have actually used it, they've leased the cameras over a period of time. That way, the operation and maintenance of those cameras and everything else is, stays with that vendor. So that's probably the way we're going to go with the camera system. So the capital cost we're talking about is actual poles for the cameras, speed feedback signs to go along with that. So, and so there is some funding, there are some things we, we are working on right now. We're, we're hoping to get that cleared up. We didn't have it fully cleared up for this budget, but we think we have a plan of action to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you. I know one of the statements we made to the state when we were passing the bill was that we would not be using state money for it. And it doesn't sound like we are, but I want to make sure we've got the funding in the budget for this year.
No, and Susan, tell me on the hand, shoulders, something.
Yes, well, we do need funding for the upfront cost. Once we start implementing the cameras and revenues start come, starts coming in for citations, the revenue that comes in can go back directly to pay for the installation of the cameras and all the equipment, everything involved with that whole system. That's where the revenue goes first.
Just so everybody knows, our deal with the state on this and our legislation was that Malibu keeps the money to reimburse us for all of our expenses. Any surplus after we've reimbursed all the expenses goes to safety programs on PCH in Malibu.
Correct. So at some point, I think we will get to a point where we'll break even. It could take a while. Hopefully a long while, because that means nobody's speeding, but we can hope, I guess.
Okay, while you're sitting here, Susan, don't go away. No change on LA Sheriff's Department staffing? I saw a small cost increase that they had.
Correct, yeah. There's still a growth moratorium, but there was an increase in salaries that they do every year and the liability, liability trust fund also increased.
So no additional staff is available to us? They still have the moratorium?
Correct.
I know when I saw the sheriff the other day, he said he's doing a great job on recruiting, but his retention is not so good.
Yeah.
Covered six. Where is that in our budget?
It will, it will be coming to the council on Monday. It's not currently in the, the budget right now because it happened after the budget was developed, so that will be a discussion, that will be in Monday's agenda.
But it will potentially fall into the next fiscal year, right?
Correct. Some of it falls into this year, but then it, it crosses fiscal years.
Is it in your budget or where is that?
It's in my budget.
Okay, so it, is that reflected in?
Well, actually, let me correct that. We're actually putting it into the budget to be put into the Palisades fire because we've received an indication that there's a possibility that it will be reimbursed. So we will be putting into our public assistance request. It's not guaranteed, but that's what we're aiming for.
And that'll be a FEMA request, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I think that's all I've got for you. And on community services, our community development, fee waivers. How much do we put in the budget this year for fee waivers from the Woolsey, sorry, Palisades rebuilds?
We do not add it into the budget, so I will make a note that we need to add that into the budget. We were estimating $50,000 per parcel.
Okay, $50,000 per parcel that actually comes through each fiscal year because, you know, it's, it isn't all, all 700 homes don't come in at one time.
Yes, and it, I'm also talking about ownership, right? That was one of the items that council asked us to look more in-depth into what that really means.
By the way, that reminds me, I owe somebody in your department a comment about LLCs. I'll get back to that. So if it's not in the budget, are we going to have an additional deficit from the fee waivers? I mean, if we assume that there was 100 homes this year at $50,000 apiece, that's...
A significant number that we need to consider and bring back to you.
That's 5 million.
Yes.
Okay.
And have a projection on each year, what are we estimated we're going to have each year?
5 million seems to be larger than what we had in the prior Woolsey.
Yes, Woolsey Fire, you had 468 homes destroyed. So far, we have given fee waivers to, I think it's close to the $7 million on this past years. We also got a reimbursement by Southern California Edison on the settlement. I believe that it was $13 million. So that kind of offset what the fee waivers for Woolsey Fire.
Okay, well, that gives me the segue into something I want to ask about. And maybe this is a combination and maybe we're not ready to talk about it tonight or this afternoon. There are lawsuits being filed on the Palisades fire. If we didn't have any, any costs related to it, I would say we don't have a claim. But you just mentioned, if we're giving fee waivers, and that's just the start of it, and before we get into the part that FEMA may not reimburse and so forth, we're going to be taking on some extensive costs that are not our fault. That fire was burning when it got here. So is there any, and by the way, I think, I'm not practiced in law without a license here, so the city attorney can throw a paper watch or something to me. I think we only have until 180 days after the event to file a claim. So that would be July 7th. My attorney friend sitting next to me shaking his head too. So if we're going to do something relative to a lawsuit, and I don't know who you sue in this, it's not like Edison is on the hook like they are maybe for Eaton or they were on Woolsey. But if we're talking about 5 million, $10 million in hits, we shouldn't be paying that, somebody else should be. So Candace, any, any comments or you want to, want to say, I'll get back to you later on it?
We have a call tomorrow.
Okay. I just want to bring that up and I think we need to look at that. And our next council meeting is the 23rd and then we go into, I think it's July...
14?
14, yeah, which would be after the date, the claim date. So we may want to be top of mind about that. Let's see, next thing, name, naming rights, by the way, for parks. You know, I was, I liked it, but I was indifferent to it when we had a $9 million surplus. I am not indifferent to it today. I can't, I could buy maybe a brick at the skate park, but somebody who wants to get their name on it, I think would be a good idea. And the other things that we're trying to do, whether it's a art center or whatever, so, and I'm looking at Kirsten on this, we, we need to be focused on that. It's an income issue, yeah.
We had a brief conversation with our interim city manager bond and we have some ideas that we need to flesh out, but that is on the top of our mind.
Yeah, because as I said, as I started all this, we don't have an expense issue, we have an income issue and we need those people to, if they want to put their name on it, let's cover it. Okay, I think I've covered all my points. I've hogged enough time here. And turning it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Hala, and Ibrus?
I'll go. I'll go. Well, thank you so much. That was a lot of work, I'm sure, and the presentation was really great. It's to be expected. We've been disaster-prone now. I'm actually kind of excited, oddly. I love the idea of an economic resiliency recovery department. I've been thinking a lot about how we can become more resilient in our own city. And in some research, I wasn't, I would like to ask, do we give out like business permits or licenses? So if I had a school here, but I can't remember, I think it was through the county.
We don't issue business licenses, they are issued by the county.
So do we have an accounting of all of the small businesses or we just kind of rely on the chambers to do that?
I don't have a lot of details. I know the city manager's office does receive reports from the county and have been working on getting more information from about active business licenses, so there's always an option there to explore it more.
Thank you.
Just to add to the business licenses, the current process, we have planning clearances and that's how we know that the businesses are getting their business license through the county.
But we don't make any money off of that?
No, we don't.
So like how much would a license be through the county? We don't have that information. We... No worries. It's, I'm just curious because it seems like a good place to think about possibly, you know, taking some control, helping small businesses, becoming more robust in controlling things, Doug?
I'll just make a comment as, as a business operator, business owner here in Malibu, I can tell you that the county's requirements for business licenses are very focused, things like junkyards, liquor stores and so forth. Unless you fall into one of those distinct categories, almost all businesses are exempt from getting a business license in Malibu or from the county. Can I, pardon? Can I, pardon? A second.
What's NSCOS?
So, I mean, I would say that there are actually a number of businesses that do require business licenses in our city. All the restaurants require them, the hotels, any of the lodging facilities would require them. So given how visitor-serving we are, there probably is a pretty robust number of businesses that do require business licenses through the county. And as Councilmember Conrad was saying, you know, it might be, obviously, we're going to have to have staff in order to fund that. So whether the business license can help fund those staff positions that might be necessary, so maybe it can be a revenue neutral thing.
Doesn't that have to be resident revenue neutral, just like our other permits?
I'm just saying that we wouldn't necessarily be a hit to the city. So yes, the city wouldn't make any money off of it, but hopefully it would be balanced that we wouldn't lose or be funding it out of the general fund to pay for a business license program and/or an economic development program or something like that, a resiliency program, whatever we want to name it.
Thanks. Yeah, some of that stuff's exciting. And when I think about how terrible the disaster was, I'm hopeful that we can think about long-term recovery and instead of being so reactive all the time, kind of taking control over some things. Which leads me to an idea that I've been researching, and I don't know if this is the time, but other cities tax the landlords. So if there is a vacancy for over 180 days, the city is able to tax them. And it climbs as far as, as long as the commercial space is vacant, the city makes money off of it. So I would love to explore something like that as far as how we're going to make some money in the city. Because I don't think, I don't think we've actually tapped into our potential. I think, again, we have some potential here that if we have some staff and time to really focus our energy, I think it could be a really good thing. And I support having more staff to do these things. So we have, we become a more robust and healthy city. Obviously, disasters are a part of our ecosystem, so anything, you know, if we need a better response or EOC, all for it. I really, I mean, I think that even with parking, like, we kind of miss opportunities with things like that, not parking tickets, but as far as revenue generating ideas, there's a, there's just so much possibility. I mean, I got a ticket for a front plate because I was missing it, and I was like, well, if it goes back to the city, I'm fine paying it, but I know that a lot of visitors don't feel that way. I really am impressed with you guys, honestly. I've been noticing more and more around the city, and I go to other cities, like, the city of Malibu actually has a really nice identity. Like, on all the garbage cans that are the city of Malibu, you put the logo. The benches at the bus stops have the logo. Then I now am able to see that what's not the city of Malibu, no offense to the agencies out there, kind of like they're the blue porta potties and things like that, but you guys really put in a lot of effort into the logos, into our identity, into this budget. And, you know, we really, I'm really proud of it. When I see Legacy Park, I walk through it. It looked really, really good. So as scary as some of this is, I'm really hopeful and excited by the conversations that this will bring. Thank you.
Bruce?
Sure. Okay, so first of all, I want to applaud you all for the work you did in putting this together. I mean, in the face of disaster, in the face of the staff shortages that we have, this is pretty much what we get year in and year out, and it's as if those things didn't exist. So I'm sure it wasn't like that behind closed doors, but the result speaks for itself, the fact that you were able to put together this product in the face of those challenges is commendable, beyond commendable. I don't have the same gloom and doom type thought process of where we are for the same reasons. I think we have a robust and healthy economy in our city. I think that the revenue sources that we have, which historically have increased year in and year out, and I think once we get over the hump of this recent disaster, we'll continue to do that again, are healthy. Sure, there are avenues we can explore for greater revenue. The question I always have is, at what cost? And I don't mean what financial cost, I mean, at what cost to the quality of life in Malibu? That's a balance we always have to strike. You know, there are some things we can do on the fringes, but I think for the most part, the nut of our revenue, though, is set, and it's a healthy nut. It's the property taxes. It's once we get over the hump of the disaster, the sales taxes will return. In fact, I understand they haven't really taken that huge a hit. And it'll be the tot, the transient occupancy tax, although we actually strive to, one day, hopefully, eliminate the part of it that comes from the short-term rentals. So I don't see the standard operating procedure within the city being a problem. The problem, you know, it's obvious, is that we cannot weather natural disaster or man-made disaster, actually, I think is a better way to think of it, after disaster after disaster. Those are what are killing us as well as other areas. There's nothing we can do, not nothing we can do to help prevent them, but there's nothing we can do if those disasters keep coming to continue as a healthy, robust city. It's just not going to happen. So the real answer there is, what can we do to stop the disasters from coming? And that's going to require the state and the county and possibly the federal government. The other challenge we have is, we have a president of our country that's trying to destroy our state, actively trying to destroy our state. And unless that changes, we're also doomed. And I mean that. That's not an exaggeration. If the federal government continues to attack our state, and now we're looking at New York and Chicago, there's no point in worrying about these issues because these are nothing issues. But once you take those off the table, I mean, assuming that the country gets straight and operates the way it's historically operated and ought to be operating, and assuming the state and the county and the federal government with our input can help with the natural disasters, I think our budget's right on track. So, you know, there's nothing we can do through the budget to change the disasters. There's nothing we can do through the budget to change the fact that we are currently under just short of martial law. So I applaud the work you did, and I actually think the budget is exactly what it ought to be right now. I don't, you know, you could tweak things here and there, but I don't think that's a proper use of our time. You guys have done a great job. So maybe two years from now, we'll have a different problem if things don't turn around on a more global front. But if they do, I think business as usual here is just fine. I mean, we need to improve the safety of our town, but we don't need to improve the revenue, and I don't think we need to substantially improve the expenditures either. I think they're actually appropriate for what we have here. So those are my comments. And again, I think, oh, I think we critically do need to get a lawyer in here at our next meeting, or a special meeting, and hire them to file a claim. There is a, six-month statute of limitations isn't ordinary. It's only because the currently identified defendant is a government entity.
Excuse me. Please withhold from discussing potential future litigation.
Okay, well, we need to get a meeting before the statute of limitations expires. There was a comment made about the fact that the fee waivers, the last time around, were essentially paid for by SoCal Edison. They weren't actually. I, it was a problem. The city council did not seek reimbursement for the fees in that litigation. So we, the settlement was for the losses the city sustained in terms of damage to property and expenses incurred in facing the disaster, but the fee waivers weren't included. So, and I don't see them as being something we're going to recover. I mean, I think we ought to, we ought to be assuming, by the way, we're not getting a penny from FEMA. If we do, great, we'll have a party. We ought to be assuming we're not going to recover the fee waivers. We ought to be, and the other issue, as I said, and this is obvious, the reason we have such a big hit right now is the fact that we're not, the fact that we owe this money from FEMA that we may never see, and we've got a huge expense we've voluntarily undertaken for the rebuilt center, and that expense is going to get exacerbated by the fee waivers. But it's a one-time hit, and as long as the other big issues that I mentioned before turn around, the revenue will gradually replace that hit and then grow even more.
Yes, Ms. Mandy?
Yes, following up with Councilmember Stewart's question, I was able to obtain the data for Woolsey Fire. 246 homes receive the wave, the fee waiver benefit, and that constituted $6.2 million. So if you're looking at the total numbers, about 51% of those parcels got that fee waiver benefit.
And it sounds like it's about $25,000. This may be more expensive this time because of the coastal...
For the complexity of the projects.
Okay. By the way, I've got the microphone. The next step says June 20th, budget adoption. Shouldn't it be June 23rd? Do we have, or do we have a special meeting for this?
June 23rd is correct. We'll be adding it to the amended agenda for the June 23rd meeting.
First thing I want to say is echo the thank yous. This was an extraordinary year, and every single person stepped up, whether you are still with the city, or you are now with the city, or you were previously with the city and you've chosen to leave in this last year. Every single person contributed to the outstanding way that the city of Malibu came through this last year. And I just want to say thank you and greatest appreciation to everybody. I echo, I think we should look at some type of support for economic development. I think we noticed, you know, this is probably the first time that any of our businesses have even had to consider having a media budget. They've always relied on the name Malibu to know that they were going to have customers and such. So I think it is something that it, that we need to have for resiliency and going forward and just kind of taking charge of that aspect, so that we can also tailor the type of businesses and we can seek the type of businesses that our residents want to see here. So we do have commercial spaces. We have commercial neighborhood for our zoning. They are here to serve the residents, and we should absolutely be a part of that conversation to make sure that we're involved in that. A couple things in the budget there for the grants, there were four groups that didn't have dollar amounts, that it just said defer to the council, but do we have what they requested so that at least we can know the ballpark of what it is that they were requesting funding of?
I can, I can address that. They were all extraordinary requests. They were in the neighborhood of $100,000, and for the education fund, it was $315,000. Doug and I were of the view that those really weren't appropriate requests within the $200,000 general grant requests, that they were one-offs, and that if they're appropriate, they ought to be separate full city council decisions, but not out of the 200, separate and apart from the 200.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to put it in perspective and concur with what Bruce said, we tried to go through all the nonprofits, and our focus on those was Malibu-centric, and lower costs made a big difference to those people. The four that we had separate, Malibu Education Foundation was 315,000, the Brigade, Community Brigade was 100,000, the Malibu Urgent Care, which I have to recuse myself on, was 100,000, and the...
Mission Nirvana, I think.
Mission Nirvana was 100,000. I just a quick comment on two of those. The Brigade, we gave $100,000 to last year, and on Malibu Education Foundation, the original plan, I believe, was 175,000 in their third year, and that would be the final year. However, we did not have requests from the Boys and Girls Clubs this year. They were able to self-fund their needs, so that freed up some money. And the two PTAs did not request money. That was included in the Malibu Education Foundation fundraising. So those are the considerations we had, and that's the reason why we brought it back to the council.
Yeah, and I don't believe that those four items are suggested to be part of the budget discussion at all. Those are going to have to be special city council considerations that are outside the budget process, because the staff doesn't have the basis to make any suggestions within the budget for them, and we need to have discussion of the appropriateness of the request, of the quester, and the appropriateness of the amount that's being sought. So it's too much to do within the framework of the budget as a general matter, was my thought. I didn't expect it to be coming up as a, it was, that was just a placeholder to show that those things are not in this budget, but they're not intended to be part of the June 23rd decision.
Okay, yeah, I just want some clarification on that because historically, they have been in those grant funds, so...
But this is getting bigger and bigger.
Right, okay.
Actually, last year, the Malibu Education Foundation was not. It was a separate item, and the Brigade was a separate item. And the other two were, didn't exist last year, right?
Urgent cares, been there for several years.
Yeah, but it was, it was 10,000 here, 10,000 there. Wasn't 100,000.
We didn't give money to the urgent care last year.
Okay. Which kind of leads me into my next, because I know we have our grant writing consultant, and I'm just wondering, are we utilizing them efficiently? And are we actually seeing any grants coming out of their contract? So...
Just to piggyback with that, I'd love to see, like, the lists of grants that we're applying for.
Just wondering if we need to change the scope of work with them? Is there something different? They're there, they're supposed to be there to help us get grants to alleviate some of the spending out of the general fund, so I just want to know. I understand, you know, both, both Richard and Candace are new to the team, and you weren't part of this during the stuff, so it's just, it's out there, and what do we need to do to modify it so we can have a more robust thing? So just to put that on.
I'm new to, so I'd love to learn more about the grant writing program or person that we have possibly dedicated to helping us do that.
Yeah, I'll just add, perfectly valid question. We don't have that information at our fingertips, so we'll have to follow up with you.
Great, thank you. There's, so the other thing that has kind of been something that's been on my list for several years, I've never gotten support for it. I really would like to get support for it this year, but I would like some parity in salary for all our directors, and I think the Public Safety Director and the Community Services Director should be paid at the same level as our other directors. They both have incredible departments, large staff, huge amount of service to our community, and their workload just keeps getting bigger and bigger, and I just, I don't see a justification for them not being in pair with the other departments. So I would like to see that request. If I could get my other council members to support that, I'd appreciate it. And also, there was, when the budget comes back, the Community Development Department was not shown as one full department. Will we see that on the next as a unified department, or are we still going to have them separated? And I didn't see a staff position in the salary ranges for the Deputy Community Development Department, so I'm just wondering where they're proposed to be in the salary.
I'll start us off with, given the time, the compressed timeframe that we have...
I understand why it is. I just, I'm wondering if on the next iteration, we are going to see that combination or if it's something we'll just expect in the next year.
I think that will happen in the next year, to be honest. We have one day to turn this budget around, and so I don't know if we're going to have time to combine those departments. However, all of the budgeting and the salary distributions are all there. The job description for the proposed position of Elondas for the deputy position is attached as an attachment to your staff reports?
And the funding is being distributed about in the three different sections portion. You will get a point, I believe, .33 under building and safety, .34 under solid waste and clean water, and the .33 also under environmental program. So it has been distributed by percentage under that budget.
Okay, I just, I mean, in the salary range, the salary schedule, where all the salaries are, I didn't see that line item for that particular position, so I just wasn't sure if that was gonna, just wanted to see where they are. going to, just wanted to see where they are on the...
It was not included until we knew if you were going to accept the position.
Okay, perfect, I understand that, thank you. So for the, the director's salary, do we need to have consensus on that, or can we have some discussion on that? I don't want to let it go for another year, so I've been bringing it up, so...
I, I actually don't support that until we have a new city manager in place that has a chance to take a look at it and make a recommendation.
And I think, I think it's a worthy idea, but I would want, I would not want to do it on the fly here, I think we need to have the, we just had a class and comp review, I think, about 12 months ago, and I'd like to see the salary grades and what we need to adjust to it. I think it's a worthy concept, we just need to have the background to make the decision.
I think we have the background, you know, we, we saw the Public Safety Department and what they experienced in this last year, and what the director led with, and with the Community Services Department, they, you know, she runs an incredibly dynamic programming, she has a large staff that she has to do with, and the various programs of just running, you know, parks from one end of the city to the other end of the city. And I just think it really sends a bad message that we don't have equality across our departments, director heads.
I support it.
Thank you.
You are.
I'm in favor, I think we just need to have the backup information and a recommendation from, prepared by the HR director or someone like that. But I do think the appropriate time to do it is with the new city manager.
We just, okay.
I don't know about the details with the nuances with city manager, or law, or however it works, but I do believe that equality through the departments, I think everybody works really hard, and that's why I would support it. But as far as the laws and whatever else goes on, I think that equality in the departments are fair.
Okay, I guess we'll wait another year on that one. And where would the, when are we going to see the, the fee schedule? We haven't had a fee schedule increase for now going on two years, so I know there was some discussion on that, is that going to be coming back for adoption this year?
I'm being told July by the team.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything else?
I do have a clarifying question. Are we, as council, allowed to do salary adjustments? Because I know we're not allowed to hire and fire anybody but the city manager and the city attorney, and possibly the city treasurer, but just so I know, is that something in our scope?
My, the city attorney can correct me, but my understanding is we can set the ranges, but not the specific salary of the specific people.
Correct, excuse me. There needs to be a resolution that comes before city council and working with your HR and finance department, then you, under the authority of your city manager, approve those, the quantity of the increase.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else?
One quick, first Renee, thank you very, I mean, you do a good job every year on this thing, and I appreciate what you're able to do. You know, just, when I was going through the, but just a couple things, and this is chump change compared with some of the other stuff we're trying to work on, but we've got this skate park coming in, and I talked to some other people who have managed other skate parks, and they sell these little things you stick in the ground, these little plaques, and apparently, they made a lot of money promoting their other skate, in other cities with skate parks. I don't know if they want to do that, I mean, I know that at one point in time, they were talking about trying to raise some money for that, that may be something you want to take a look at, I don't care what it'll bring. I keep looking at these, we're spending $12 million, I think, on the sheriff, and we spent another $900,000 on the summer beach team. And I've always said, why can't we go to supervisors in the county and say, help us pay, I mean, it's your beach, it's the county beach, we're springing for all the money. I, you know, if we've, I don't know who's close to Lindsay Horvath these days, but she can help us with some money for us, be worth taking a look at. And it may be some other, I was just, as I go through this, and you said there may be some, you know, some low-hanging fruit that we can take advantage of, so that's all I got for today.
Thank you, I agree with you, I think that there are a lot of county services that we are helping to support. Okay, if there's nothing else, staff, do you need any other feedback from us? Okay, I guess we're adjourned. Thank you, see you guys Monday.